I'd like to call to order, please, the Board of Education meeting for Celine Area Schools for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at six thirty-one P. M. If everyone could please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our last board meeting of two thousand and twenty-one. What a year. Thank you for everything that you've done in our community and on our buildings. This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, thirty minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. I am seeing no public comment forms for our students. I am seeing two for community members. So we're going to call on Brian Bowes first, if you'd like to approach. And Brian and Linda, hello. If you can just toggle on the mic so you have the green light showing, that would be great. Just a reminder for everyone, three minutes for public comment, and when we have thirty seconds left, Secretary Eastep will show the yellow card. And when your time is up, she'll show the red card. So if you could complete your thought, that would be great. All right, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hi, Brian Bowes. I'm a teacher at the high school and the S. E. A. President.
Linda Smith, day lead custodian at Heritage and Vice President for Support Staff.
We wanted to come and thank the board for your support during our bargaining process. Each of our groups TA'd our contracts last week, and I know that it's on the agenda for tonight for you to peruse and discuss and hopefully vote to ratify. Both our groups ratified our portion of it today. We were able to address, both groups were addressing complicated issues during the fall, and the process was collaborative, collegial, took quite a bit of problem solving and some math. I know on our team, we have three math teachers, so we felt really good, having a lot of math support because it's some tough changes that we made. And we want to thank the board for their support through a pretty stressful process for all the staff, E. S. P. and S. E. A., as it always is this time of year for those things. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback and comments, Brian and Linda. Next, we have Sarah Scating, staff and parent. Sarah, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
It is Scating, like the math word adding.
Scating, all right. Thank you for the correction. Whenever you're ready.
So I just said my name is Sarah Scating. I'm a parent.
Hit the button.
Hit that button. It's in front of you.
Thank you so much. As you said, my name is Sarah Scating. I'm a parent of three children in Celine Area Schools and on staff as a literacy tutor at Harvest. As a parent, I remain extremely grateful for all the work you put into making Celine Schools a wonderful district. And as a staff member, I see more intricately all that your jobs entail. I want to begin by sincerely thanking you for all of your support and encouragement you've been to the staff through these challenging times. Every step you've taken to keep us healthy and encouraged is so greatly appreciated. I want to bring to your attention, on behalf of the literacy tutors and the English language tutors, an unfortunate change in the current staff contract. As you may well know, formerly all tutors and paraeducators were grouped together for pay scale, and it has been our goal to advocate for a separate grouping based on the technical skills needed to be a tutor and an E. L. L. tutor. Literacy tutors, for example, administer state mandated Acadians reading and math assessments three times each year. We deliver targeted intervention for both reading and math to small groups of students who fall below the cut line for risk. We collaborate and communicate with teachers, staff in our buildings, staff in other buildings, and even parents. As you can see in the contract before you, literacy tutors and E. L. L. tutors are now in their own grouping, but much to our surprise, the pay scale is now less than the current pay scale for pairs at our grade level. My request to you is that you would, at a minimum, make our pay scale match that of paraeducators in grades K through five, and that you would highly consider making it match paraeducators in grades six through twelve, as the beginning salary on that scale more appropriately matches the pay appropriate for technical skills needed to do both jobs. For reference, this year and our republic schools listed literacy tutor openings at a beginning pay scale of sixteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. This request should not be time-consuming for you, it's just that you would simply match one of the two proposed pay scales. This request should not be a large financial commitment for you, considering that all literacy tutors and E. L. L. tutors work part-time. Additionally, it's my understanding that some of our funding comes from grants and other resources outside of the district. We have been working with the union to address our pay scale, and even after the contract was voted through last night, we've continued to attempt to create a letter of agreement with no success. It's my understanding that meetings are scheduled to occur on Friday of this week to address our concern, but I have great pause in you signing this contract as it is. Please consider doing all you can to make sure these positions are shown the value they hold for Celine Area Schools by changing this pay scale before the contract is signed. Thank you for your time.
Sarah, thank you for your comments. In a response to previous public comment, we'd like to thank everyone for communicating with us when you see us in the community through SAS Board at CelineSchools.org and through the Let's Talk device on our Celine Area Schools website. We appreciate hearing on all topics and also appreciate when you also include kind of a chain of command if you're looking for a comment or a resolution within a building, looping those building principles, et cetera. And so thank you very much for that. Moving on to number five, revisions or approval of agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I would actually like to make a change, pulling item A, approval of the Board of Education regular meeting minutes of November twenty-three, twenty, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, off and making it item J on action items due to some additions that need to be added to those minutes. So I would like to please entertain a motion to, oh, yep.
Oh, I was just, which one did you?
We'd like to remove from item F, under Neola revisions, six, one, five, two, student fees, fines, and supplies, because there are some modifications we need to make and some things we need to check out with Neola before we proceed. So that'll, do you want to finish that, or am I doing okay so far?
Yes, I, yes, so we can discuss it at that point, but there's no final answer on that, so to check into it, but that's fine.
Okay, so just to restate, I'm pulling item A off of consent and making it item J. And Michael, you were also suggesting item F?
We are removing, we'd like to remove the third policy revision from item F and take care of it at another time.
Okay, perfect, and leave it on, leave the other two on consent.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, are there any other changes to the agenda as printed? Okay, so the changes are, again, moving consent item A up to action items, letter J, and removing item F, item, item F, bullet three, sixty-one, fifty-two, student fees, fines, and supplies, removing that from the consent agenda. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the agenda as revised. Thank you, Michael, support?
Support.
Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, seven, zero. Now we'd like to invite Superintendent Latch to the podium for a special superintendent's message on safety. We offer our heartfelt condolences to the Oxford community, particularly to Oxford High School, and particularly on this ninth anniversary of Sandy Hook. We would like to make sure that safety and security of our buildings and our students or staff are always taken extremely seriously, and that's why this is moved to the front of our agenda. Steve, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'd like to invite up Kurt Ellis and Carol Melcher as well, as they're going to help with the superintendent's message. I will say this, that we felt that this topic, safety and security, was so important that we wanted it to be near the beginning of the agenda so that we could talk in greater depth about what we are doing, what we plan to do, and move forward in that regard. So with that said, safety and security, it's a three-part presentation and discussion. There will be a community conversation, I will say this right now, on January twentieth, where there will be time for Q. And A., both from the community itself and any Board of Education members. So we'll start off with, Kurt is going to talk about physical safety enhancements.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that we started on this journey for safety and security some time ago. Back in November of two thousand and fifteen, the theme to the bond that our community passed was safe, secure, warm, and dry. And that was a sixty-seven and a half million dollar bond proposal that had several key safety components associated with it. As you know, we've developed secure entries in all school buildings, and that secure entry includes buzzer systems at the doors for visitor management, and it also includes some safety glass. We've got proximity cards for employee access. In most cases, we still have a couple places where there's keys, but for the most part, we've got proximity card access. And one of the key benefits to proximity cards is it used to be if you had a key and you somehow misplaced or lost your keys, we couldn't absolutely take that key out of commission because there were so many other people that would have a copy of that. With the proximity card, if somebody tells us that they've misplaced or lost their proximity card, we can suspend it immediately, rendering it useless to somebody that might pick it up. So that's been very helpful to us. We've installed facial recognition systems here at Early Childhood Special Education. Now, that system is actually not functional right now, it's had some technical difficulties. But while that system was in play, and it will be back in play again, one of the key benefits to the constituents coming in to that building is that they were not having to put their children down or to put the things that they had down. They could simply lean in, get their face recognized, and come in, gain access that way. We have, and this is kind of an unseen but very much appreciated piece, is we've updated our technology to enhance cybersecurity. We've invested heavily in that area, and I don't want to jinx us by saying that other people have experienced things we have not, but other people have experienced things we have not. We've improved traffic flow around our school buildings, the entire loop around Woodland Meadows and Heritage has been reconfigured, and that's never been more important than it is now. Our schools all were designed with a certain percentage of students riding buses, and the last eighteen months have really impacted that. And so those new improved traffic flows have really been put to the test. There's still room for improvement, but no question that they've helped. We installed a pedestrian walkway on campus parkway, new parent drop-off loops, like I said, on central campus, and then this Michigan State Police grant to install safety glass in school buildings. We've also done ALICE training, and this was something that we did for a couple of years, where we had Jason Russell from Secure Education Consultants come in and work with our staff. And then as we hired new people, he would come in and provide additional sessions with that. But that ALICE acronym is Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evade. And it was very, very different from what we had been teaching for years, and there were some really, really important nuances to that that our staff has really benefited from. We are participating and have participated in the Washington County Emergency Preparedness Operations Plan, where we've had our plans reviewed by Washington County and submitted to them so that there is some synergy with regard to how we do business in the county. We've installed this Raptor Visitor and Volunteer Management System in all our school buildings so that people can come in and get a real-time screening before they have access to our students. And that was operational in the fall of twenty-one. And then, you know, Superintendent Latch has said in the past, we continue to use gaggle, handle with care, and okay to say, in a very, very effective way in this district. And I think it stands as a real testament to our relationships with our law enforcement community that oftentimes when our building principals get a handle with care, they've already known about that situation because the communication is so clear between us and law enforcement. In terms of future safety enhancements, we want to continue to leverage our Pittsfield Township Police School Resource Officer to serve Celine High School and Harvest, and then reestablish relationships with the Celine Police Department. We've obviously had that particular position on hiatus for a little while here, and we're looking to do that. We are recommitting for training and drill work. I can tell you that we had reached out to Secure Education Consultants before the issue the tragedy occurred in Oxford, and those folks are going to come down and provide training for all our school buildings when we get back in January. And those trainings really do focus on age-appropriate drills and also spontaneous drills. So the work that we do at the elementary is going to be and always will be different than what we're doing at the middle school and high school for those obvious reasons. We're going to continue to expand the use of proximity cards and facial recognition, and then explore additional partnerships with state and local law enforcement and agencies to monitor and assess social media threats that occur online. That happens today. There are some really specific examples where it has really benefited us, but that partnership, again, that we have with local, state, and federal law enforcement agencies has really been critical to us. Now, Mrs. Melcher, I believe, is going to talk a little bit about some of our school safety procedures.
You can hand that over. Thank you, Kurt. Kurt's done a very, really nice job with getting organized around training and also took a very active role in the last bond campaign to make sure that buzzer systems and other secure updates in our buildings were there. I want to say with Carol, she's done a great job of organizing around drill and safety procedures. And being in Liberty for all these years, this is not new to Carol. She's been actively participating in organizing us at Liberty and helping other administrators with drills and procedures. So turn it over to Carol.
Thank you, Dr. Latch, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about school safety and security. Nothing is more important than keeping our children safe. As President Steben mentioned, this is the anniversary of Sandy Hook, and two weeks ago, four students lost their lives in Oxford High School. We are prepared, we are ready, and we are, we stand ready to make sure that our students remain safe. But those events are grim reminders of how our world has changed and how school safety looks very, very different than it did ever since Columbine in nineteen ninety-nine. So a little bit history. In two thousand and four, Celine was about to open a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot high school complex without a comprehensive school safety plan. And knowing that every school must first ensure that students are safe, we forged a relationship with Great Lakes, Homeland Security, Pittsfield Township, and Celine P. D. to assist in forming a school safety plan for that new facility and, in theory, for every building in our district. So you can see the contents here, and this is what our school safety plan looks like at Liberty, looks very similar to the school safety plan in all of the buildings in Celine Area Schools. Because Celine Area Schools recognizes its responsibility for the safety of all students and staff, and that extends to possible natural and man-made disasters, and that such emergencies are best facilitated through careful planning, preparation, and practice. A first response team and a crisis intervention team have been identified in all buildings across the district to be activated in the event of a crisis. This team, along with the building administrators, is responsible for a coordinated response to any such emergency. So this guide, as you see it, is pretty comprehensive. You can see the table of contents includes bomb threat, fire evacuation, lockdown intruder, shelter in place, tornado, severe weather, accident, sudden illness, cardiac emergencies, student endangerment or violence, release of students, child abuse, neglect, and reporting procedures, building catastrophes, biological and atmospheric threats, and radiological, nuclear threats. This uses incident command model, which is identified and explained and lists the first response team members in each building. And this plan serves as a template for every building, is customized as necessary for each building. List here are the state requirements for drills. The state requires several drills in every school building throughout the state, regardless of where you happen to go to school, documentation of each drill, and a public posting on the school's website. So there are five fire and evacuation drills that are required every year. At least three of those must occur before the beginning of the year, one of those, I'm sorry, before December first, and one, two reasonably placed throughout the remainder of the year. One of those has to occur at a time which is not a classroom time, like during lunch or recess. School safety and security drills have been renamed. We used to just say lockdown, 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 and right away that the anger sometimes came from our constituents. So we now call those safety and security drills lockdown, shelter in place, and one of those occurs before December first every year. One must include safety measures that are appropriate to an emergency, such as the release of a hazardous gas. So that would be a shelter in place drill. And then one of those must be for a potentially dangerous individual on campus or in a building. Tornado or inclement weather drills occur in March of each year because that's when we have tornadoes in Michigan. And then finally, and new this year, is suicide prevention. This year, the state has required that any student who has issued an I. D. card through their school picture, on the back, there must be the suicide prevention hotline number on the back so that we can keep students aware that there is protocols in place for them to report if they're feeling any suicidal ideation. We announce these drills as practice. We want students to know that they are safe, that we practice these, because what we do in practice, we will do in case of an actual emergency. We're very sensitive to the needs of our youngest learners, and we guide them through these drills with care and compassion. In addition, in Celine, we conduct two cardiac emergency drills that are scenario-based. These are specific to A. E. D. use and what would happen if there was a sudden cardiac emergency in any building. These are not necessarily required by the state, but we do them here, and we use our first response team to make sure that they are ready to respond to any medical emergency in the building. So this is what I was talking about with developmentally appropriate reactions and training for our youngest learners. It was about six years ago that I started a conversation with Brian Puffer, who's our community education director, about the safety drills that we conducted at Liberty. And if you think about Liberty in particular, there are babies here in the Little Star Preschool and Daycare, Pooh Corner, preschoolers ages three and four, early childhood special education, little learners from two and a half to five with developmental delays, our young adult program, many of whom have mobility challenges, and Liberty Club, even older adults with cognitive challenges and sometimes with mobility challenges as well. That's a huge responsibility when you think of how do you plan for all of those things in one building with all of that diversity of learners. We talked specific to, at that time, a program that we run in Celine, it's called Safety Town, and Safety Town was here at Liberty, and we wanted to make sure that our youngest learners, age four, rising kindergarteners, were ready for the safety drills and weren't scared about the safety drills. So Julia Cook is an author who has authored several books about being prepared for the dangers that might occur in school, and we've used these books in our preschool programs and also in our Safety Town programs so that students know what to do if they ever encounter a dangerous someone in the building. So they were added to the instruction and drills at our elementary programs for the rising kindergarteners and also for our little learners in other buildings. So what do we do with older students? Older students are actively involved in the training. We use a train-the-trainer model. In other words, we train the adults first in all of our buildings to make sure that they know what to do, and then we ask the teachers to guide the students in training them on how to respond to these specific emergencies. ALICE protocols are taught to all of our students at the secondary level, and we ask them to use their decision-making skills to decide what is most appropriate for them to respond in case of an emergency. So if it's safe for them to evacuate the building, if there's danger in the building, then we encourage them to do so. If it's not safe, then we show them how to safely lock down and barricade a room. So teachers train the students, and like I said, secondary students actively participate in the scenario-based trainings. These programs were mentioned earlier. The gaggle filter at Celine Area Schools is electronic filtering of all electronic communications. So students' emails, students' text messages, anything that uses our web is caught up in the gaggle filter. It's not because we want to get you, it's not that at all, it's just because we want to make sure that our students are safe. So this flags words that might be inappropriate for school use, but also flags words that lets us know if a student is struggling, in crisis, is having suicidal ideations. And so we're able to respond to that pretty quickly. Handle with care is a Michigan initiative, law enforcement notice comes out if a student has, in the community or at home, experienced some trauma, and that trauma could impact how the student behaves in school the next day. So we're very, very careful and very cognizant of the fact that that handle with care notice lets us know that we have a student in crisis and alerts us to the fact that we have to handle that kid differently in school. And finally, EduGuide is a social-emotional wellness interactive program that we use just here at Liberty with our at-risk students in the alternative high school. Again, electronic flag is sent to us if a student is writing things that might be a little bit suspect. So keeps the barometer on mental health and wellness, lets us know if a student needs help. And those are ways that we try to keep the community and the building safe and alert to any danger or potential danger that might be happening. I think that's you.
Thank you very much, both Kurt and Carol. We appreciate your support here. I do want to share this story that Carol shared with me the other day. I do want to share this story that Carol shared with me the other day because I think it paints the picture of how students do respond differently now with Alice training than they may have in the past. That we recently had a intruder drill, and when Carol announced where that intruder was at Liberty School, the students in one of the classrooms in the alternative education wing appropriately knew that they had an exit window in their classroom on the first floor. They found out where that person was. All 14 of the kids jumped out the window and walked to their rallying point, just like they should. In the past, what would have happened there was students would have been taught to lock the door and make sure they get into the corner of the room and not leave that room. So I think that's a good example of how you appropriately use Alice, and it, it does take understanding the situation. So I, I thought that was a good example. As we move forward here, we're going, I'm going to talk a little bit about, you know, what should, should students do? Because I think we do need to recognize that we're all partners in keeping the school district safe. Our students, our community, our staff, the Board of Education. And so we want to make sure we send a clear message on what are some of the things that our students can do. And so if you look here, we talk specifically about, you know, when students see concerning behaviors, whether that's in school or on social media, many, many of our students already know what to do, and that's to go and tell a trusted adult or somebody that they feel confident that they can report this to, and whether that's a parent or a school official, this is very, very important in this process. Also, we've been talking about using OK to Say in that the message could be sent anonymously using phone call, text, or email, and then that gets filtered back, if identified that Celine is the district, which is one of the choices, then it gets filtered right back to the district so that we could act on that, on that tip. And we want to make sure that we are publicizing that and making sure that students do know that this option exists and that their families do as well. And then this is our visual that we use for OK to Say. In terms of what students should not do, and this is part of some of the issues that played out on December 3rd in our district as we were experiencing some unfounded threats through social media as it relates specifically to the high school. And that is that, you know, you read a social media post that's concerning and choose to stay silent. Now, many, many of our students saw that post as it's coming in on Friday morning on that day, and they were doing the right thing. They were making sure that administration knew and that they were actively pursuing that versus just staying silent. The other thing that, that was happening though is they were passing on some information to each other in their following, which, you know, we understand can be expected, but one of the issues that was developing, and that's, this is the part that's embold at the bottom, that their, the social media posts start and then they, they become embellished, meaning what was a general threat now becomes where, you know, students are speculating about a time of the day or during passing periods. And then that's what happened here, and it resulted in, you know, us needing to do a fair amount of investigation with both the Celine Police Department and the Pittsfield Department of Public Safety. So we want to make sure that students aren't playing into embellishing social media posts, which is what was largely playing out on that particular day. So what about parents? How can parents help or community members? You know, one, encourage your children to talk to trusted adults about suspicious behavior that they may hear in classrooms, hallways, and just make sure they're talking about that on a regular basis. Also, I mentioned OK to Say before, that we mentioned that, that OK to Say is a good option. The other thing is monitoring your child's use of social media. And that does not mean being in the room constantly when kids are using social media, but ask them what they are doing on social media. Take a look at what exactly are their ways in which they interact in social media. I think that goes a long way just to make sure that parents are aware of how their children are using social media. But maybe the most important one is number four, just talking to your, to your children on a regular basis about what's happening in their school day. And I know we all go through that where you, you ask your kids, what happened to school today? And they say, well, nothing, not very much. But this is where we want, you know, parents and community members to make sure that they are trying to actively engage and maybe develop a series of probing questions. Well, tell me one thing about your day. What happened in the afternoon? What about in your social studies class? The more that parents are talking about their kid's day, the more some of that information may flush out that they're either, they themselves as a student aren't feeling good about something or that they're recognizing some behavior from other students that is concerning. This is a good resource that Carol had forwarded to me on how you talk to children about violence from NASP. It's a, you could see from school psychologist. Tips for parents and educators about talking about violence and sort of this reaffirming safety, making that time to talk that I just mentioned. Keep explanations developmentally appropriate like Carol was talking about earlier. You're going to talk differently about this with early elementary students than you are, are high schoolers. And that you do know that, hey, you can remind, even if you as a parent don't know the safety procedures in school, you can be probing with your kids, hey, do you know what to do in this scenario? And keep that fresh in mind. And again, I was talking about observing your child's emotional state. That comes out more when you're talking to them, when you are asking, probing questions, because that's the only way sometimes. You know, others, if students are never interacting with their parents on some of these topics, there's just not going to be the cues that you might pick up on their emotional state. And maintaining a normal routine is important too. So this was a good resource that Carol has passed on. I do want to talk about our outstanding relationship with both the Celine Police Department and Pittsfield Department of Public Safety. We do have our wonderful Chief Hart here from Celine Police Department, and I do just want to have an individual shout out. Chief Hart helped us tremendously on, on that Friday, December 3rd, when we were working through some of those threat issues at both the high school, but they also translated down to the middle school. And he did a tremendous job of running point and helping us move through those scenarios and working very collaboratively with the police, the police from the Department of Public Safety at Pittsfield. And recognized through this process that we need to make sure that we work on jurisdictional support, that we have students living in the district that are in the Celine PD zone. We have students who are in the Pittsfield area, and then we have some that are, it's the state police that are technically part of their jurisdiction. The recognition is that we need to keep working on developing better and clearer procedures about when it comes to jurisdiction, about school safety. We need to make sure we are working collaboratively and closely together so there aren't delays in time as it takes to investigating things. And again, Chief Hart did a terrific job, along with the other Celine PD officers and Pittsfield Township. And we're, we're very thankful with all the work that our SO, SRO officer Lamar Gasaway is doing at both the high school and Harvest. And then I already mentioned the part about jurisdictional support. Now, the one thing that I do think is very, very important that we address tonight is that a lot of this, as we talk about students' behavior, and we talk about signs, and we talk about ways in which we can provide better support to students, is being very aware of this SEL or social emotional wellness of our students. You know, we started the year, this year, pandemic year, where we had been working with teachers on professional development to literally start the first two weeks of instruction, paying a lot of attention to the social emotional wellness of our students. They were coming back off not being in school, many of them, for a year, year and a half on a regular basis, and we knew that that was taking a toll on some of their social emotional wellness. So we started the year with that mentality, and as we've gone through this, I think we're all feeling that the pandemic has taken a toll on our, on our own social emotional wellness, but certainly our students. Now, we have such a tremendous group of counselors, social workers, teachers, support staff, and administrators, that they've been great at connecting with our students throughout the year and continue to do that. We have, in using some of our USR funds, be able to hire three new behaviorists to better help support some of the behaviors in the various buildings. And that's great because there are more behavior issues that we are seeing develop throughout the pandemic and also contributing to social emotional wellness. So that's an important move that we have made, and we will continue focusing on SEL as being a real key in keeping our schools safe. I mentioned this at the very beginning, so the next step with all of this is to give our community an opportunity to talk more about this, have questions, have, have a Q and A session, get people in smaller groups so they're able to talk about this, and we're formally announcing that that date is going to be January 20th, 6:30 to 8:00, right here in this room. And we'll, we'll, we'll do, we'll talk more about marketing and advertising for that, but we want to make sure we have that date because that would be for board members, community members, anybody who does want to attend, including our students, would be great to have more because we want, we talk about a partnership. The only way you have a partnership is if everybody's included in this. And of course, our Celine, Pittsfield Police Departments, of course. Okay, and that is it. We thank you very much. And we hope to see a lot of people on January 20th.
Thank you for that important message upfront. Moving on to scheduled reports, our first is from Executive Director Anne Hurst-Creates from the Foundation for Celine Area Schools.
Hello. Thank you for having me tonight. Thank you for asking me to be here. I think I can do this, Ben, let me try. No. So quick recap of all that's been going on in the Foundation for Celine Area Schools since September, because usually I report out maybe every month or so, and obviously we've had a lot going on here. So President Stebbin asked me, so I'll just recap in a few short minutes. So it was wonderful to actually be able to have all of our events, right, in the fall. We do so much and just to gather together again. So just a few pictures of our Hall of Fame. We celebrated the Class of 2020 as well as 2021. They were very happy. It was a great weekend and we had a lot of fun. The fall fundraiser that we actually did here that many of you attended, we had over 200 people here, and it was wonderful. And so it's just, again, glad to be back together, highlighting grants, letting teachers, students talk all about the, the different grants and just what the foundation is all about. We just had a Giving Tuesday, and actually, we did very well, just a total social media campaign and, and email blasts, as I'm sure you all got, and we did very well with that. So we're back on track, I feel, and getting back together again. We're still, it's going to be still a little bit of a different school year for us regarding events, but those were wonderful to have in September and October. So just this morning, actually, we awarded a good amount of grant money. We started district grants, student-led grants, building grants, we take every other month, and then teaching grants, we just do usually one time in November, they have to be submitted. So we had already awarded some money back in September, and then we just awarded some money this morning. So so far, we, we set aside $125,000 budget for this year. So far, we have given 20 grants worth for $47,607. So we're very excited about that. Mini STEM subject grants, definitely a lot of DEI grants, social emotional wellness, literacy. We had an unusual amount of book asks. So I was very happy to know that, you know, teachers at all different levels in the school buildings wanted students to actually have books back in their hands. So it was wonderful to, to see that. And then just infrastructure and more. So that just kind of breaks down a little bit of, of everything that we've been doing. And then we'll, again, we're going to have nine more grants that we're going to look at in January, and then potentially a few more during the school year. So we definitely will, I know, will be giving away at least that $125,000. So it's what we do, and we're excited about doing it, and just seeing, again, the creative and the innovative ideas that our teachers come up with. So this is a little skewed, as you will see from the next slide in a second, because we just got a really big gift a month ago. But over the last few years, our fiscal year starts July 1, we have gone up and up and up, and even through COVID. Now, we got a big gift last year in 2020 when the alumni came underneath us and, and gave us a, a big gift, but we just received another one that I'll talk about a little bit more in detail. But we're already at, I think it was about 216,000 that we've already raised this year. So we've done very well. So next one, I'll explain a little bit more about that big gift. So a wonderful person in our community named Tricia Lenkos has a relationship with a man named Dick Ornstein, who's on the right-hand side there with the Michigan hat. He is a trustee of a charitable trust, a man on the, on the left named Daniel Offit, and he passed away in 2016, and just a very, very unique, interesting man. He did a lot in the financial world, yet he's very into arts, he was a sculptor, he was from the, the East Coast, and just an incredible man. Well, long story short, we got connected with Dick as the, as the trustee, and so he gifted us $100,000. Now, for two, for two very specific things. So $50,000 is going for a new scholarship for the connect, it's going to be called a connecting class scholarship for a connecting class student graduating, so that's always dear to my heart, so I'm very excited about that. And then for the alternative high school, and I believe that Principal Melcher is wanting a van, and so that is the thing that she will be getting for her students and their travel needs into the community and for different job sites. And then whatever may be left over for that other $50,000 will go into a restricted fund specifically for the alternative high school, for grants for them. So it's very exciting, and I was able to talk to Dick. He lives down in Florida. He's going to come visit us in the spring. I'm excited to show him around our district, show him everything else that we do as well, and hopefully maybe entice him to give some other money. So you know me, always asking. So anyway, but Daniel Offit was an incredible man. If you have an opportunity, Google him, please. There's some Youtubes out there about him, the, I think it's the Weston Historical, Historical Society out in, I think it's Connecticut. Is that, yeah, okay. He, really a good video about his life, and just a very, very interesting man. Okay, excellent. So always thanks to our sponsors. We have 35 this, this year that came on board with us and continue just to be so generous, and a total of almost $100,000 this year, 73 cash, and then $25,000 that people have given us in kind, including a wonderful company called New Founder, who's actually giving us a whole new website that'll be launched in January, so we're excited about that. So without them, we couldn't do what we do, as well as obviously all of our donors. But I always want to give them a shout out. Alumni news, I just always needed to be talking about this, not only as a proud alum, but because last September, the Alumni Association is under the umbrella of the foundation. So we are all one at this point. And so we were able to be, have the banquet in, in September. Actually, we did it the same time as the Hall of Fame weekend, and it's the Classes 71, a good crew came out for that, and we had a lovely time. We also were able to just recently be in the Celine Chamber Parade, and we had already talked about walking. We had walked two years ago in it as the alumni group, and then I had the, I had the privilege of being the grand marshal as well. So hanging out with my fellow alum, Mayor Marl, and it was just a, it was a wonderful night for the community to come together. But more alumni events will be coming down the pike, so I'll make sure to let you know of that, but also trying to just message the fact that the alumni group is now under the foundation. We're excited about that. So typically, in February, we have our big event called Snow Blast. And it's where, you know, years past, 400 people have gathered together and had a fun night at Travis Point Country Club. We just felt, it was a consensus that I don't, just don't know if we're quite ready for that yet. So hopefully, we'll bring that back in 2023. So we decided to shove off, push off our spring fundraiser that we're going to have, or winter, to a spring fundraiser. We've yet to come up with a name, but they're working on it. And so please save the date for Thursday, April 28th. I would really like you all to be there. It's going to be a little bit different. It's still, we're going to have an online auction prior to, we'll have a couple live auction items at the event. It will be Imagine Theater, we'll have some, we're going to kind of rent out a few of the theaters, we'll have the lobby area, and we'll highlight some grants, we'll still be able to put together a beautiful video that we'll be able to show on the big screen, have movies. And so it's going to kind of be a fusion event of what we've done in the past and for Spring Rec and then for a fundraiser. So I think by April 28th, people hopefully will have no problem, at least coming to a place like Imagine Theater, and of course, our partnership with them is incredible, and so we're looking forward to that. So no snow blast this year, but... So no Snow Blast this year, but we are gonna have a great spring fundraiser. So again, please save the date. So I just wanna just say thank you for all your support. Thank you so much to Superintendent Lottsch and just our working relationship is wonderful, it just continues to be as it always has been. Thank you, President Stebbin, for, she sits on our board and Ryan Rowe does as well, and Kara Davis. And just thank you for your support to us, as obviously what we are doing for the schools and for the students is essential, still a joy to be doing it and being able to see these grants in action and how it's actually affecting, right, our students. And so I appreciate you having me tonight. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and again, thanks so much.
Anne Hurst, thanks so much. Yeah, and thank you to all of your board and all of your volunteers. I got to sit with them this morning and see their continued passion and effort, so thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Anne Hurst? Thank you. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to you too. Moving on to Item B, Continue to Learn 2021-22 School Year, Dr. Lottsch is back with our Assistant Principals from Celine High School, Musetta Danine and Teresa Stager.
Okay, I'm back. I would like to thank Anne Hurst as well, that, you know, she's done an incredible job of continuing to grow the foundation. I really think it's at a all-time high in terms of how we're doing financially with the foundation and also in the amount of giving, that, you know, all that funding comes back to support our teachers, support staff, administrators, our students, and, and it is great. And throughout the COVID pandemic, over these last couple of years, the foundation continues to evolve with us and demonstrating flexibility with our needs and being agile to adjust when we, when we need something different as a result of the pandemic. So we appreciate the partnership and the flexibility and all of that. With that said, so I'm here with Musetta Danine and Teresa Stager, two wonderful assistants, or two of our wonderful Assistant Principals from the high school. I'm gonna start with the COVID update and then turn it over to both of them so they can talk about ninth grade transition, which is such a critical, important point. As you've been seeing from the Continue to Learn presentations, we have been moving through these transitions. Again, we were talking about kindergarten, then the heritage transition, then the middle school transition, and tonight, we're gonna touch base about the high school transition. Okay, we're gonna start with, with COVID updates. Okay, so what we're seeing from our trend pattern is that we are in a very high state of COVID. Yes, there's been a little bit of drop, but if you look at sort of the historical trend, we are in this high transmission phase and we continue to operate school five days a week in this phase. So again, I point out that yes, we're in high transmission, but we've been very successful in mitigation strategies to make sure that we are minimizing the number of COVID cases and being able to operate with most of our, our students in five days a week of in-person instruction. If we look at our latest dashboard, you'll see that, again, at the elementary level, when we end up with a largely elementary class, especially at the younger elementary levels, that that ends up with a quarantine impact of the entire class, which means that most of those students are still in that test to stay mode where they're able to be in school. So even if you see larger numbers on the dashboard, many, many of those students are in school. And I will say, I have been on calls lately with other superintendents across the county, we are doing a lot better than many of the districts in terms of the number of actual COVID cases and amount of quarantining that are going on in the schools. So I want to talk a little bit about next steps from Washtenaw County Health Department. One of the issues that we have been dealing with, specifically our front office staff, our nursing staff, and all those that are involved in monitoring COVID cases, close contacts and quarantine, we're really having a hard time keeping up. And that's because there is so much investigation needed for if there is a COVID case, finding out who are the close contacts, making a lot of parent phone calls, having return calls because you can't get the parents right off the bat. At any rate, our nursing staff is having a difficult time keeping up. That is the sentiment across the county on the call today with other superintendents. So there are, they are looking at changing some protocols after winter break. Not so much to say that we're not gonna be masking, because that's been an important part of our mitigation strategies, particularly in the substantial and high transmission phase. We will continue with that. But there is gonna be more discussion as we get back from winter break on some potential changes as it relates to close contacts and quarantining. And so just wanted to provide that, that update here. And with that said, we're gonna turn it over to Musetta and Teresa. Again, I want to reiterate, though, the goals. We, we put this slide up each time, and again, it's reinvigorating the focus on the, on the compass, personalizing educational experiences, so we want you to look for that in the presentation, continued social emotional support of our students, and connection to real-world experiences.
Good evening, thank you for having us here this, tonight, and for allowing us, allowing us to share with you a little bit of what we're really proud of in regards to the ninth grade and the transition between middle school and high school.
As Dr. Lottsch said, I'm Musetta Danine, so I'm one of the Assistant Principals at Celine High School, and thank you for having me.
And I'm Teresa Stager, I'm one of the other two, well, there are three of us, one of the other Assistant Principals at Celine High School. We want to talk a little bit about our why, why this is really important to us. Transitioning to ninth grade is very important. The high school is very different than the middle school and the students have different needs, there are different social, social emotional needs that need to be addressed while also supporting students in these increased academic expectations. So our goals in supporting the ninth grade students when they enter are to keep mental health in the forefront of decision-making, developing and enhancing foundational skills, and preserving access to a variety of post-secondary opportunities. So in that vein, what we are doing currently, we have orientations for ninth graders, we have two different opportunities. This is different than in years past and we found that, we used to do a transition night, February, early February, where we discussed scheduling options and then give a tour of the school, different academic clubs, et cetera. And we found that by April or May, a lot of parents were questioning when the, when the transition night was happening. So we already did that. So we found that we really need to split it up to a time where they can come and they're closer to actually entering the high school building. So what we'll be doing this year is February 23, we'll be doing a scheduling and curriculum information night at Celine High School, it'll be held in the auditorium, but we will also be offering it via Zoom, for those who can't make it, it'll of course be recorded. And during that time, we'll offer curriculum information from teacher leaders, school information, transition information, dates that we can share with the parents and families. Then on April 7, we're going to invite everyone back, families and students, for a building tour, the, some of the teachers will be there. And then we will also have, which has been a big hit in the past, is a club and athletics fair. We set up tables down that long hallway in the Commons, around the track, and all of our 80-some clubs and 35 sports are all set up at tables and they give the students different opportunities, chances to sign up, and ways that they can connect with other students before they enter the high school. So one of the last things, which is one of our, the thing that we're the most proud of about our ninth grade transition and what we do for our ninth graders is Hornet Time in partnership with Link Crew. And so Musetta is going to talk a little bit about our Link Crew program.
Like Teresa said, Link Crew is a really big part of how we help our ninth graders transition to the high school. So as we know, it's really important. So our Link Crew program, it's a year-long transition program. We work with our 11th and 12th graders, they are our Link Leaders. It is an application process, so they have to go through an application, be interviewed and selected to be a Link Leader. And then we get a couple of 11th and 12th graders that are paired with a group of ninth graders. And then these individuals are together for the entire school year. This is done through the Boomerang Project, which is a nationally-recognized organization. They do transitions for ninth graders as well as sixth graders, so you might recognize that with web at the middle school. So an example of what our Link Crew program does is they, they do orientation for our ninth graders, they have social activities throughout the school year, and they also provide academic support for our ninth grade students. So an example at orientation, students will meet their Link Leaders, so they'll get to know them, they'll also get to know the other ninth graders that are part of their group or their cohort as they transition to the high school. So at orientation, they'll pick up their schedules, they'll take school pictures, and they'll do some building tours so they become familiar with it. They'll also do some team-building activities. So our Link Leaders are also trained in these activities with our Link Teacher Facilitators, and so they run our ninth graders through these activities to build, you know, relationships with their 11th and 12th grade mentors and along with their ninth grade peers. And then again, the ultimate, like, goal is for our ninth graders to bond with each other and with older peers as well, so they feel a connection to the high school when they get on campus. So an example of a social activity that took place this year is something called trunk or treat. So our Link Leaders will partner together, they decorated their car, it was around our Halloween time, and so they were able to trick or treat or trunk or treat, really, they came and got a bunch of candy, they could dress up if they wanted to. So it's an example of some, a lot of the fun that we also provide for ninth graders. So aside from the mentorship and academic support, we do like to have activities for them to feel like they're connected, kind of relax and get to know each other on a more a social level. And then another thing that Mrs. Stager mentioned with regard to Hornet Time. So Link Crew is a big part of our Hornet Time curriculum. Those are opportunities throughout the school year for our Link Leaders to plan activities and lessons that they will take their ninth graders through on our Wednesday Hornet Time. And Ms. Stager will kind of go through what Hornet Time looks like. But the big piece is to continue that transition into high school, so academic support through lessons regarding like goal-setting, being organized, and schedule selection, providing a peer relationship. So again, kind of get that perspective of someone who's been through it, who's an 11th or 12th grader, sometimes it's hard to get that perspective from adults. So having those 11th grade and 12th grade Link Leaders is important. And again, we talked about the Boomerang Project, so they have very structured lessons that our Link Leaders will take our ninth graders through.
And then Hornet Time.
Thank you.
I do want to share a quick story about, and I don't even know if I've told you about this before, this is one of my favorite things ever about the trunk or treat that Hornet Time, or that Link Crew put together. A few years ago, when Link Crew really started working with the Hornet Time, the ninth graders throughout the year, it got to be about mid-October and they, they came to us and said, like, there's, the ninth graders don't get anything, like, everything is for the upperclassmen, everything's for the 12th graders, everything's for the 11th graders, we want to do something that's just for them. And so they came up with this trunk or treat idea where only the ninth grade students get to go outside. And so during lunches, Bushes provides the bags and these, all of our, we release all the ninth graders to go outside and they all go around. And the first year that it happened, I think this year, Julian, you can probably, did you have trunk or treat when you were a freshman or no? Did you? Okay. Perfect. So his would have been the first, the first class that had it. And when they came back in from that lunch, all of the 10th through 12th grade students were like, where's, we didn't get to do this, where's ours? And we said, well, you know what, the ninth grade gets something, like, let's just give them this. So I thought that was, it was really important and it's something that, and I know our Link Crews come to you a lot too, Musetta, with things that they want to do to help support the ninth grade, so they really take ownership in this process and they really feel strongly about it too. And so I wanted to share that with you. Hornet Time is a 29-minute block of time that we have every Wednesday and it happens after second hour, goes from 10:10 to 10:39. And it originally started, we had a state evaluation visit in the 2016-17 school year, it was my first year at the high school, David's first year at the high school. And they went around talking to students as part of the process, and one of the questions they asked the students was, do you have a, do you have one person in the building that you would feel comfortable going to? And 80% of the students out of the 200 that they asked said no. And so we said, we have to fix that. So Hornet Time was born as a place where every student would have an adult every Wednesday throughout their entire year in Celine High School, or their entire career at Celine High School. They would be at the same groups, the same teacher, the whole way through. What we have done is we've created this year a new program for the ninth graders where the ninth grade has the same teachers every year. And we do a lot of our, we have some DEI lessons for the ninth grade students, a lot of the lessons that Mrs. Danine mentioned, a lot of mentorship opportunities. And the next year, they will move into one of the 10th through 12th grade teacher Hornet Times, but their group will stay the same. The cohort that they are with is the same cohort that they came in for orientation. They have, I think, 10 students and two Link Leaders for each group, and so there are four Link Leaders and 20, 22 students in a class. And then we just move them forward and the Link Leaders go back and work with next year's ninth graders. Considerations for the future. Oh, thank you. We're looking at expanding Hornet Time at the start of each trimester. We've had some conversation about the jarringness that ninth grade can have in that they don't change classes in eighth grade, they have the same class the whole year long. So after 12 weeks of getting used to the high school and now they have new teachers, a new schedule, new classmates, you know, what could we do to ease that? So we've talked about having an expanded Hornet Time, maybe those first two days of the trimester, just to have it that every day you go back to Hornet Time after second hour and you do get to see the same group, maybe you go back over safety protocols, maybe this is a time that we discuss time management, maybe this is a time that we discuss productivity, different things that we can put in there, but to just give it a little bit of grounding at the, at the beginning of each trimester. Incorporating a Strategies for Success class for more ninth grade general education students. We have academic strategies, that is a class for our students on IEPs, but we don't really have a general class. We have a few here and there, but they're very small and they're few and far between to be able to help our ninth grade gen ed students who also need some sort of support, extra support. And then streamlining course offerings and possible opportunities to have the same teacher for the A and B sections if possible. So these are some of our, some of our ideas and we are open to any questions.
Thank you very much. It's great to see the two of you together, I don't get to see it enough. So it's good to see you both. Any questions? Yeah, Candace, go ahead.
Yeah, this is great. Makes me look forward to my, my younger ones moving up. Just a quick question about the Link Leaders. So for, when you're selecting or matching, really is my question, do you think about similar interests or what is the process for matching, or is it randomly assigned?
The Link, for the most part, they are randomly assigned. The, the groups are, we find out how many, the process is, we find out how many Hornet Time classes that we can hold for ninth grade. And then we divide up the ninth grade class by that many students and then the Link Crew, we have four adults at the Link Crew, four adults at the high school who run our Link Crew, and they take the students and separate them, they're usually random. Yeah, they're random and then the, the Link Leaders are assigned to them randomly as well. Thank you.
I was wondering, so a lot of thought has gone into kind of rebuilding and rethinking Hornet Time from my freshman year to now. So I was wondering, you know, what was taken into consideration, what has changed and if, you know, in totality, the feelings towards Hornet Time has changed this year with the incoming freshmen, sophomores and juniors because this is pretty much all of their first year in high school as opposed to us.
Yeah, we'll partner that one. That's, that's a great question, Julian. You are correct. There, there are some mixed feelings on Hornet Time, it's very much a homeroom. So it really, 10, grades 10 through 12, it really does depend on the teacher that you have in there with you, right? It's someone who's leading the conversation, someone who is in there, in there with you. The ninth grade is a little bit different because they do have the Link Leaders. I think from when you were a ninth grader to now, a lot of what we've tried to work on is we've realized that more recovery time is needed and in that, sometimes it's a study hall, right? Sometimes 29 minutes on Wednesday for a study hall is what our students need. Sometimes it's not an activity on productivity or social media or academic integrity or one of class meetings. Hornet Time is another place where we hold our class meetings so they don't interrupt classes, instructional time. So it's been a lot of trying to balance those things with also understanding the needs of the students and the times that we're in. And to your point, your school years have all looked different and your needs have all been different. And so we've tried to, sometimes we're punting, trying to adjust, you know, what, by what we think the school is feeling. But I think, what would you like to add?
With respect to the ninth grade, right, we talked about how we're incorporating some of our DEI lessons. And so we felt like as our students are transitioning to the high school, we want to kind of lay those foundational skills as well, starting right away with regard to inclusivity, accepting all people and having these conversations in a safe space where you have like your four Link Leaders, your teacher, you have your 29th grade peers, right? So you can have some of these conversations and get, build those skills and how to have them. And then when you hit your 10th and 11th and 12th grade, you have, you have your new Hornet Time teacher, but you've been with the same peers, and so we can get into those deeper conversations and then do the class meetings. And if we need to have some like whole school or grade- And if we need to have some like whole school or grade level conversations or meetings and audit assemblies, all those things, so it kind of can work for that too. Yes, so part, thank you. So we also have our equity team members, building members as the ninth grade Hornet Time teachers. So again, we wanted those individuals who feel passionate about that work to lead those conversations and support our, you know, younger learners in that work.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Great.
Well, yeah, yeah, there's a loaded question.
Did we get it all?
It's changed since my question here has, so has everything else in the world.
That's the truth. Yeah, I love the idea of getting even possibly more feedback from Julian's class if they were truly the first, huh? Great. Yeah. Susan, did you? Brad?
All right, so first I'll give a shout out. Link Crew is something that's really after my heart, right? You know, I've done the grouping. I've done the, it's, it's a tremendous work and it's all like trying to find proper groups that function well together. And I, I guess give a shout out to the, the leaders and also the coordinators at the school who, who do that work. Cause that's a, it's, it's, it's constant planning. It's constant things for them. Continuity, you talked about you have a continuous experience for students. And you said that, that, does that go, you said, is that just trimester to trimester? You were nine to 10, you said.
It's, so it is, it's all, their entire high school career, with the exception of this year, we had an opportunity because of the way that we had originally created Hornet Time and the way that we scheduled the courses. We had some classes that were really low. We had some classes that were really highly populated. And so we really needed to readjust. And, you know, to, to Julian's point with three classes who were really new to Hornet Time, this was a good year to do that. So the ninth grade students and every other grade of students will move with their cohort of students every Wednesday until they graduate from Celine High School. So for instance, my first class of Hornet, and I have a class and all of the administrators have a class, the counselors all have a class. We are all a part of this work. My first class of Hornet Time were 10th graders and they graduated last year. So I am now back with 10th graders and I will take this group of 10th graders until they graduate and I will come back with 10th graders. The difference that we've changed this year as opposed to the years past is that it used to start, it used to go back with the ninth grade. So you would start with your ninth grade class and you would move up with the teacher, with those students until they graduated and then go back to ninth grade. Because we have created this real experience, we've now asked for the ninth grade teachers to be cemented in that space. And Mr. Smith's here, he's one of those teachers, to be in that ninth grade experience. But the cohort will stay the same and their teachers will stay the same 10 through 12, with the exception of any students who are in CTE courses. Those, if they have a second hour CTE class, because they need hours for their certifications, they are not in Hornet Time. But if there's anything that is shared during Hornet Time, their teachers do that.
But your leaders don't loop through, correctly graduating.
Correct. The leader, yeah, the leaders, the, the, do you want to talk about the link crew leaders with their, with how they, yeah, cause next year they'll reapply and.
Right. So we have 11th and 12th graders. So everyone, they'll reapply each year. So seniors up, they'll graduate and we'll kind of want to fill that in. So those won't, they won't like cycle with the ninth graders, but the teachers will from 10th to 12th. And then all the ninth grades will have the same like Hornet Time teachers. It's a lot of logistics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had, kind of went off of Julian's comment about assessment and capturing, even because you're, did you say about four years now?
Or Hornet, this is the fifth year for Hornet Time, but it's the fourth year that we've had Link Crew with the ninth graders.
Okay.
I'd also like to add that it's really kind of like, yeah, no, it's kind of like, what I was getting at is, I've really only had one year of Hornet Time. Because 10th grade got cut short. Last year we were virtual.
Right.
So like it, just to your point, like it's, it's been rethought. So it was just kind of weird for our whole entire class.
Yeah, it is weird. And, and to your point too, with, you had a lot of good points, Julian, as normal. With the ninth graders last year, we, we did a virtual Hornet Time with the ninth graders last year because we really felt like they needed some connection to the high school. So on async Fridays, we did virtual Hornet Time for a half an hour. We had a different, they had a different group of teachers than they have now, but we really wanted them to have some connection to the building that some of them were never in.
Second question. So incentive for these amazing leaders, food?
Lots of pizza.
Certificates?
Oh, yeah. I mean, they have, yeah, they get, they get awards, but I'll, I mean, they have, they have their link crew, or not link crew, yeah, link crew, sorry. They have their link crew awards, they have their shirts. We feed them as much as we can. But they, this is a group of servant leaders. They truly love to just serve and be a part of this. And that's what's amazing for is now, Link Crew used to be, you know, when you signed up for Link Crew, it was for the orientation in August. Now it's a full year commitment and you are signed up to connect with the same group of 22 kids for a whole year. And we have a bigger group of people who sign up for it than we can hold, which is amazing.
I love it. Thank you.
I just had a question. We talked about assessment. At the end of the school year, do you have a survey that you do a formal survey of everybody and how have you incorporated that?
We have in the past. We didn't do one last year. We do them of staff every so often. I believe, I believe, and it's been a couple of years since we've done the senior exit survey in its true form. But I believe that we add information in on the senior exit survey. And if not, there is a spot that we have sent out a survey to all of the students for Hornet Time to talk about, you know, how their, how their experience goes, what they found useful, anything they'd like to change. And we, we dig into those surveys and really take them to heart.
So that's at the end of ninth grade, you do the survey?
It's the end of every, every year we do it for all the students.
Just wanted to make sure, I thought.
So if I were a new student transferring in from somewhere, is this the opportunity for them to, you sprinkle the new students, transfer students throughout? Is that the way it works? What a great bonding or helpful activity for new students. That's great. I don't want anyone saying this is a clique of 22 students.
Oh, no. No, and they are, they are as random as they can be. So, so if they are, they've created that on their own. Right? Exactly. It is, it's like Breakfast Club. Maybe not just exactly like, yeah, exactly. Right, without the detention part.
The mix of students.
Right. Yeah, exactly. I, I really liked the separation in February for the, the scheduling and the curriculum information and the idea of having that fair. I thought that was very inclusive, having that long hallway and having everyone there, all of that opportunity. There are a lot of things I like about our high school. The number of opportunities for diverse interests is probably one of the biggest. So thank you for that. My question is, is about when, when an eighth grader is transitioning up to ninth grade, and I know a lot of ninth graders right now, just because of siblings and things like that with my kids. How do you acclimate those kids in COVID and in a regular year to the academic rigor that I know the freshman year is? That's the million dollar question. That has been something that we've really been working on and trying to figure out what that magic sprinkling is, right? Trying to figure out what that looks like. Our ninth grade teachers, I will say, our teachers who teach the ninth grade subjects are very, very good at helping with this transition. We've also met Dr. Latch, myself and Laura Washington met over the summer to talk about what we could prepare them for before they come up. What we've found to be the most, the biggest struggle pre-COVID, because now they're very different, different concerns. But pre-COVID, it was the move from standards-based grading to the, the grading scale that the high school uses. And that percentages are percentages and grades count and we have final exams and things like that. So one of the things that Mrs. Washington has been talking to the eighth grade teachers about, and I know this is happening because my daughter is in eighth grade, that teaching them how to, how to check power school on their own. And knowing when assignments are missing, knowing if you're, what your grade looks like. My daughter really didn't pay attention to her grades before, not in a bad way, just it wasn't a thing. And now she's checking them, not, you know, and not in a bad way, just knowing, knowing how she's doing. She can tell me why she got the grade that she did. So the eighth grade teachers are really doing a nice job with that. And I think that that's going to help a little bit. We've also talked with our counselors when they go down to the eighth grade to talk about scheduling and things like that. They're also doing more of an education on GPA, right? What that is? What does it mean? It starts as soon as you walk into the high school. So knowing what that is, how you can, how you work with it and, and what you need it for. So we're looking to try, they do a wonderful job. Our counselors do a wonderful job when they go down to the eighth grade and talk about scheduling, et cetera. But this is something that we're really trying to help bridge that gap so that that's one less thing that they have to figure out when they get here. Great, thanks. Yeah, I know it's tricky and I, I love to hear that the partnership there with Laura exists. That's, that's wonderful. Yeah, go ahead, Brad.
You just talked about that transition for like of, of teaching power school and that. What about our Summit kids? Right? Because they're used to being on this platform that gives them these power focus areas and these projects. And so now there's a transition for them to kind of go completely away from that. So can you speak to that a little?
This, what I'll say is we haven't really had a Summit class come in that wasn't also a COVID class. So being able to really do, to see what the differences are is hard at this point. And you, right, and, and they will be, they will be coming in. We have seen, you know, I will say we have seen just from students who were fully virtual last year and students who are now, everyone is in person full time. We have seen a lot more dependence on devices, not for good, bad or otherwise, just that that is where their comfort level is. And socially, emotionally, that makes sense if they were at home. This was some, this was the way that they learned. So there is a lot of that that we're trying to figure out. But again, we do have opportunities for students who were in the Summit Program for, we have blended classes where the students are, you know, three days a week in, in-person instruction, two days a week somewhere else in the building, doing their own independent work. We have online courses that are options as well for classes that we don't offer or don't fit into a schedule. So there are opportunities for students who learn best that way. Does that answer your question? Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we got a lot of stuff. Yeah.
So Steve, you talked about quarantine procedures and you were on a call with the health department today? Is that right?
Yes.
So what are those new, are you not, are we not ready to like lock those down? What the new?
Yeah, no, we wouldn't be ready to, because it's discussion with the county health department and I don't want to, you know, say that this is a finalized procedure. In, in essence, there's a lot of detail that goes into quarantining and close contacts, a lot of research, a lot of bookkeeping, a lot of entering into spreadsheets. That's the part that's been really challenging for our nursing staff. So that, that's what we're discussing.
Dot, dot, dot. To be continued. Moving on to Item C, Policy Committee update, Secretary Easton.
Yes, so the Policy Committee met on Thursday, December 9th. And you'll see some policies that have been from that meeting that are on the agenda and in the packet tonight. Some of those are on the consent items, item F. And it's part of the Niola updates that I believe we've finally come to the end of them from the fall. And so we had administration input on those so we can look at, you know, our current policies and new ones as well. And so we finalized that. And then with the Policy 167.3, which we all remember by heart, the public participation at board meetings will also be oops. Oh, recommended for action. We put it on that item as action as a second reading. So the committee, and we could talk about that more in detail, took the suggestions back and made some changes on that. We also had a couple of discussions and the minutes, again, are in your board packet for this December 9th meeting. But some discussions about administrative guidelines. Some schools with the board docs have policies listed and then also the administrative guidelines. So Betty Yonkey has been in communication with Niola. And Niola is working on updating a lot of administrative guidelines. And so there should be an update on that hopefully in January. And hopefully we can get those on the book or at least to be able to have access to that. And then technical corrections, we'll have some of those come in January where there may be some small changes. But we want to make sure that it still comes through the committee and to the board, possibly just as consent that, you know, we made this minor change, just to make sure it's on public record. And then board operating procedures. We had a discussion about just reviewing that. That's something that didn't really happen this year. It was more contact us if, you know, if you, if you wanted to do some changes. And so we set some deadlines, but didn't, didn't receive too much. But, you know, it's something that the committee discussed about, you know, maybe a couple of us taking it on and just, you know, reviewing it and, and making some updates that fit, really fit our, our current board and the things that we've learned throughout this year. And just making sure that it's accurate with our current policies. And then the procedures that go along with that. So, yeah.
Any questions or comments for Policy Committee?
I had one more thing too.
Okay.
So I just want to thank, because it's the last school board meeting of the year. I want to thank Candace and Michael, sorry, Vice President McVeigh and Trustee Jones with all of the, the work and support that they did on the Policy Committee. I've been on this board for three years and been on the Policy Committee for three years. And I feel like this year has been, we've accomplished a lot and really worked together. And, I mean, we put out two brand new policies and we have an officer treasure. So I just want to thank you both for, and also Betty Yonkey and Superintendent Latch, just your, your help and support on moving things forward and getting through it. So, thanks.
All right. Thanks, Policy Team. Speaking of treasure, Valenti, you're next. Finance Committee update.
Okay, the Finance Committee met just before this meeting tonight at 5:00. We discussed three items. One, we looked at the summer 2022, this coming summer bond work, which we're going to have several action items to approve contracts. Basically, we're going to be spending somewhere in the neighborhood of $6.5 million. And we're going to be touching every school except the high school and Harvest. Those are the only school buildings that will not be touched by this. We're again using Clark Construction as our general contractor. We've used them for many, many years. They've done a very good job for us throughout. It's a very tight schedule. Most of the work is going to be done at the middle school, a lot on the, the gym there. So, but I think we, we've proven over the years that we've been pretty good stewards of the money with these bond money. Going back, it was talked about back in 2015 when we passed a very large bond issue, about 65 million. And we did a great job, I think, of, of preparing our, our buildings and for what is a lot of common sense things today. We also got very good news on, we heard earlier in the public comment from our unions about tentative agreements that we have. We're looking forward to hearing about the details of that in our closed session tonight. So that's very good news and I, I want to thank everybody involved with that. More of a more mundane thing is Manchester Schools are no longer going to become our fiscal agent for Mesa. Celine, we're going to take over it here. We're the largest, for the consortium of schools in the county that deal with that, Celine is the largest. We believe our staff is best equipped to do that with, thanks to Assistant with, thanks to Assistant Superintendent Ausley. So those are the things that we're looking at. We'll talk more about the action items for approval of bids coming up later tonight and our closed session with the union contracts. Yes?
The acronym that you gave at the end, can you repeat?
M-E-S-S-A. Health insurance. Yeah, I'm sorry. Health insurance. There's a consortium that it's all paid through that. So it's more of a mundane thing, but our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Assistant Superintendent Ausley has agreed to take that on for the consortium because I think we're, we're, we are best equipped to handle it. We're the most professional, I think. I also would like to thank my fellow committee members and Assistant Superintendent Ausley for giving us all this information over the, the year. It really helps us a great deal in terms of keeping track of what's going on financially. Thank you.
Thank you. I was feeling really grateful for the, the community passing that last bond when, when listening to our safety message from Dr. Lodge, too. So any other comments or questions for the Finance Team? Okay, great. Moving on to our action items. Our first is a recommended motion to approve the minutes from the November 23rd, 2021 closed session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. No, I was just looking for, for someone to make the motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brad. That's okay. This one doesn't need a lot of discussion. We just have a different protocol due to the Open Meetings Act for the processing of closed session minutes. So Secretary Eastup will pass out six copies of the closed session minutes. We will take just a second to review and read them. She will collect all six back, verify that she has, she has them in hand and then will sometime this evening give a sealed copy to Betty Yonkey that will remain on file for a year. So it'll be just a minute. As soon as you've read them, just, you want to put your paper up? Okay, Susan, you have six? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Moving on to Item B, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the 2021 Board Stipends as submitted by Superintendent Lodge.
So moved.
Oh. Do you want to make the motion first?
I, I make the motion.
Brad? All right.
Support.
Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Item C, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the January 11th, 2022 Board of Education Organizational Meeting and 2022 Board of Education Meeting Dates as submitted by Superintendent Lodge. Motion?
So moved.
Dennis, thank you.
Support.
Susan, thank you. Do you want to say anything about that? I think we, we had previous discussion at the, the meetings and have eliminated a couple of meetings in November, the second one in June. We added one in August. I think that's.
Right, and also just one again in December. I think, I think we spoke about that, just the understanding would be any month, there's a meeting that goes down to one a month. It just may be a longer meeting. We have more board business to do, but I think it's, it's a, it's a good suggestion and a good path forward with the meeting dates.
Okay, all those, did you have a comment?
I'm, I'm becoming, as I was given this a fair bit of thought after our superintendent evaluation that went on for three hours or so, or two and a half hours. I started to worry a little bit that the first meeting, November 8th, was going to be a bit strenuous because that's around the time when we might be doing the superintendent evaluation. It's also election night, so it's a kind of a interesting, you know, we might be distracted a wee bit. Some of us, more than others. So I'm feeling more uncomfortable about dropping November 22nd. So if, if I cast a no vote, it's just to, just to note that, that's all. One could always keep the meeting on and then decide to remove it if we feel so inclined. But that'll be up to the next people setting the agenda, so.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. I, I, we discussed this at the last meeting. There were a couple of, a couple of meetings. I, I may have kept one of them on between the June and the November. I did not know that was election night, so that's good. We want everyone to have the opportunity to vote. And it's the first.
Not when.
The way it falls.
Something about Monday being, not when there's a, November's the first is a Monday, then it's actually November 8th. I learned this as part of my citizenship test.
There you go. So, so recognize what Dr. Lodge said, too, about some slightly longer meetings and the need to call special meetings. So thank you, thank you, Michael. Any other comments or discussion on this, this item? Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
See, I went with the ayes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just checking, okay, hearing none.
You had me at special meetings if needed.
It's always a special meeting. We learned that this year, didn't we? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. I'd next like to entertain a motion to approve the 2022-23 Celine High School New Courses as submitted by District Teaching and Learning Lead, Cara Davis. Motion?
So moved.
All right, Candace, thank you.
I'll second it.
Brad, thank you. Is Cara there? Cara or Steve, would you like to say anything about this one?
It's nice to see all of you. Thanks, Teresa. So we've been working collaboratively across the last couple of months as a part of the cycle of renewing courses to continually revisit what the department chairs and the respective departments, as well as the high school administration and the teaching and learning team to be reflective of the needs of the high school and the courses as they exist. So we have four new courses as a part of the course approval process tonight. And we're happy to speak to those if you have any questions.
We did want to give just a little preview on, I don't think, oh, I turned it off. Sorry. There we go. We wanted to just give a quick timeline so that you are aware of what the new course timeline, proposal timeline looks like at the high school level. In October and November, teachers have the opportunity to create new course ideas. That usually happens within their courses, within their departments, informal conversations. And at the end of November, course applications are due through our informed K-12 process. You have a copy of those applications in your board packet this evening. The course applications then go through a process of the teacher leader, which is the department chair, myself, Dr. Lodge, and then they come back after the Board of Education has approved or denied them. At the December teacher leader meeting, before we present it to you, we do present it to our teacher leaders as a whole so that they can take a look at the courses and make sure that there's no overlap. So if there is a social studies course that may also have a lot of English in it or an English course that they're also covering in a different area, different crossovers, we make sure that that doesn't happen. So the first Board of Ed meeting in December, courses are brought to you for approval. And then we add them to the course book, which is compiled over the holiday break, the winter break. And students can select them when they begin scheduling in January. So two of the courses that you have are not actually new courses. They're just name, name changes. So I just wanted to explain those very quickly. In the math department, we have two current courses that exist that will just be combined into one course. And there's, the rationale for that is Applied Statistics was originally a statistics class that was for students not moving on to AP Stats. If you were going into AP Statistics, the regular statistics class was a prerequisite. That's no longer the case. So Applied Statistics and Statistics are teaching the same content from the same book at the same time. So we're just renaming it to Intro to Statistics. It's the same, same group. And we feel that that will be better just all the way around in the math department. In PE, we originally had classes for options after PE 2, fitness for athletes, and then we had fitness for female athletes. We felt this was, these are, these are dated courses, clearly. We felt that given our, our DEI policies, given our transgender policy, this is not appropriate any longer. So we've changed them to Weight Training 1 and Weight Training 2, which is essentially what they are. And I believe we are looking into the possibility of students being able to take these in place of PE 2. So the state requires one semester or one, one half credit of PE. Celine area schools requires a full credit, so two classes. So these may be, may end up being an option for a second one. Anything I missed there? All right, cool. So this is the new social studies class, and this was actually brought by Brandon Smith. And he has come tonight in case you have any specific questions about the class. He asked that he could come and talk to you to answer those. This is Public Policy Analysis. It's an elective for grades 11 and 12. It's an extension of the US Government Course, so this would be something for students who may not want to take AP Econ, right, Brandon? Yeah. And then it would allow students, in, in the times that we are in, this is extremely necessary, we feel, allowing students to have discourse and ground their argument, in fact, using current events and real life issues. It would be a class that, once again, is an elective, so the students have chosen to take this course and then using things that are happening in current events as a part of this. Are there any questions about that course? Susan? Trustee Eastup?
So Mr. Smith, I think should maybe, oh, you don't have to.
Okay.
No.
I, I'd like to say hello and, and meet him and, and understand why this came about. That'd be great to hear from the person who, yeah.
Yeah, I'd love to talk about it and answer any questions that you have. So my name is Brandon Smith. I'm one of the social studies teachers at Celine. And this is, as a social studies department, an area where we felt we can make some improvements in our course offerings, allowing students to have the opportunity to have discourse around issues, learn how to have discourse around issues, and, and give them an opportunity to talk and to each other and about real life things.
I encourage you to encourage them to come to the board policy meetings, if you want.
There you go.
Even hear, hear from them as well.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm excited about this course.
Me, too. I'm excited about it as well.
Any other questions for Brandon? No?
Yeah.
What sources are you going to use to derive like curriculum and your choices for that? Is it going to be just all current event based?
No, so we're going to look at more, so this isn't going to be like I just watch CNN 10 and see what's going on and then talk about that kind of thing. It's, let's look at the issues that are, are most present in terms of larger scale things. So we have ideas of where issues can go, but we also want to be flexible enough to allow current events to guide us. And if, if something is more pressing to our students, then let's, let's go in that direction.
I see your shirt, so you could, you could, it always stands out to me. But you could have students come over from the Ford School possibly and.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea.
Do some partnership. I mean, they're fantastic.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thanks.
All right.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. And the fourth course that we are bringing forward tonight is an ELA for English Learners class. And this is in response to our growing EL program and the need to meet our students' needs who are English learners who have scored a four or below on the WIDA, which is our benchmarking system that we use to assess students from K through 12th grade on their English language development. And this course is essentially creating a space for our English learners to learn to speak English, to learn to interact in English, to have social skills in English, who have developing skills, who may or may not be able to access the regular curriculum inside of their English class or their social studies class because their language, their English language isn't as developed as their primary language. And so in this side, this space, we would be using the can-do descriptors from the WIDA to guide the expectations for the work, which are essentially speaking, listening, argument, writing, and there's a handful of others. I think interaction, social interaction are in there as well. And also be aligned to the ELA standards, but, that we use in our English classes, but at the appropriate text level for those English learners in that space. And those are the four classes. Do you have a question?
I do, but I thought you might have more to say.
I don't. I have, I have questions and thank you.
My question is what happens to courses that are decommissioned, deactivated, shelved, however you call it?
That's a great question.
I would love to, as a board member, love to see a report on what has been phased out. I don't believe we've ever seen that. We've seen, for five years now, I've seen, here are the new courses. I'd like to see what's.
We can absolutely provide that for you. Every year when we look at the new courses, before we do that, we ask the department chairs, the teacher leaders, to go through and find any courses that either we feel have, no pun intended, run its course or, or, you know, it just is not, needs to be updated, et cetera. So we do go through, I believe we took out five or six courses this year, not including the ones with the name changes. There are some that rotate. Our German program was restructured, so those courses run in on every other year process. So some of those come out as the others go in, but we can absolutely provide that for you. And the rationale as well. Yep. Really rich discussion. Yes, great question. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you, Brandon. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 6-0.
Can I ask for just a quick question?
Yeah.
On the motion before, did you say the name and the second to make the motion for the?
Yeah, on Item D. Oh, on Item C. A motion was made by Treasurer Valenti and it was seconded by Secretary Eastup. Yep, no problem. All right, moving on. Item E on our agenda, under action, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the contract awards for the middle school gym and boiler remodel to Clark Construction in the sum of $444,749 and the following subcontractors, Axiom Construction at $245,000, Foster Specialty Floors at $434,970, Intercall at $144,078.00 and John Dyer Mechanical at $1,165,000 and Huron Valley Electric at $143,860 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ausley.
So moved. McVeigh?
Michael, thank you.
Support. Valenti?
Dennis, thank you. Miranda, would you like to say anything about these? Or Rex?
I would just like to thank Miranda and Rex, who are so actively involved in coordinating this. This is a lot of work. You see right there that that is, you know, a number of different vendors to try to coordinate all that, to make all this work is actually very complicated. And then to keep them on a timeline so that one phase can go right after another is very important and they're doing a very good job of, of really managing that across the board, really for Items A through H here.
Yep, thanks, Steve. We, we talked about that in the Finance Committee meeting as well. The amount of project management that is going on here is, is a lot, so appreciate, appreciate that. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Item F, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the following middle school gym and boiler project management and abatements as provided by Nova Environmental for $70,016.00 and total environmental services for $468,000 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ausley.
Motion. Gerbi?
Brad, thank you.
Support.
I, I heard Candace first, so Candace. I, I think we, we've had the, the conversation. Does anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns with this before vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Item G, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the roofing replacement contracts awarded to CEI Michigan LLC for $1,306,400. 400, wait, $1,306,460.00 Quality Roofing at $1,1967.00 Le Col Planners at $376,264.00 and Roofing Technology Associates at $154,000. and Roofing Technology Associates at $154,188.00 as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ausley. Moved?
So moved, Valenti.
Dennis, thank you. Support. Support Susan, thank you. And again, previous conversation was had, can we get some more numbers on this action Sunday tonight? Any other comments, questions or concerns before we vote?
I don't think you'll have to stand up for this, but could you remind me which, which school building is getting the roof refreshed?
All High School and Harvest.
Harvest too.
All except, yep, yep. Pleasant Ridge with the Meadows, yep. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Item H, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the Apple quote of $374,279.10 for 480 new teacher devices as recommended by Director of Technology Troy Wisink. Michael?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you, Michael. Second? Support. Candace doesn't say anything, okay, thank you. Troy, would you like to say anything about this one?
I could just touch base as a standard refresh that, you know, we cycle, you know, the life of, of computers in and out and this is one for, for our teaching staff.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for Dr. Latch before we proceed? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Item I, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy 0167.3 Public Participation at Board Meetings as Recommended by the Policy Committee.
Oh, so moved.
Michael, thank you. Second?
Me. Support.
Susan, thank you. Policy Committee, would you like to say anything before we vote?
Yes. So we brought this back to the table after discussion from the first reading. And so I just want to clarify some of the changes that we made, actually one change. So we did move, we did take out upon the arrival of meeting under C and changed it back to before each public participation portion begins. Just to make sure that, that, that's clearer than the other language. And so we wanted to make sure that that's reflected in there, as all the trustees had mentioned. If we want to go into further, you know, details about that and clarifying, that could be a, a board operating procedure in the future with changes. Also, there was a request for, to request on whether the superintendent can call for recess to help support the president. And then also it talking about the presiding officer and adding superintendent. We, you know, talked about that. That it's referencing only the presiding officer and that while the rest of us can call a recess, it's really just kind of outlines and, and guidelines for the specific presiding officer. And again, board operating procedure if we need to go into more detail about that. And of course, we're happy to support, support the presiding officer, you know, as we can during, so. Any questions?
You were going to mention the last one, view versus attend.
Oh, yeah, yeah, President Stevan had, has suggested at the end with the board may permit individuals, it did say to attend meetings remotely. And she had suggested to view meetings remotely, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments for the Policy Committee? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to vote, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Moving on to item J, which is one that I pulled off of consent, it's our Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes of November 23rd, 2021. The change that I would like to make is with regard to the superintendent evaluation, there's just a little tiny bit of content that's missing, but it does affect the overall result, result of the evaluation, so I want to make sure to include it. So in the minutes under number 16, we would be adding language to talk about the, talk about the, the summative evaluation score of 86% or 3.429 out of four, which equals effective. So we would be adding a sentence right below number 17. So what had happened is it had, yeah, so it had the professional practice average of 91% at 3.658, but it was missing the summary in the final evaluation score, again of 86 point, 86% or 3.429 out of four, which is what goes to the state. So it's just an important sentence to add to the, the minutes on that one. Which you will see changed in consent soon, in a couple of minutes as well. Any other question, any questions on that one? Okay, so I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes of November 23rd, 2021 as revised.
I'll make it, so I make the motion to approve them as revised.
Okay, thank you Brad. Second? Michael, thank you. Again, any other questions or comments before moving to vote? All right, seeing none, all those in favors, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Okay, that's all of our discuss, our action items for tonight, so we're moving on to discussion items. One item, MASB Board of Directors, Vice President McFay.
This may turn into an action item, but we'll see. Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB, has five or so openings for their Board of Directors. And after five years and reaching platinum, master platinum level and starting to wind down my own work on the International Society for Technology and Education, I thought I would throw my hat in the ring. Apparently there's an incumbent. It's a three-year term, there are six-ish meetings each year. And if, for some reason I'm not elected next year, they'll just put that up for, you know, open that position again. But I think it would be a great opportunity to serve the, the, our fellow trustees across Michigan. I've been quite impressed with MASB's work over the past five years. And last thing I wanted to say was that I need to be nominated by the board. It has to appear in the minutes that I've been nominated, so if any of you feel moved to make a motion to nominate me, I would appreciate that. And there are a whole bunch of steps that follow after this, but it would be my honor to represent Region Seven, of which we are a part, if elected.
I was going to ask the region, I was thinking it was three or seven, it's been a while since I looked at that.
Yeah, we're Region Seven, I have to look it up every time.
Were you ready for the interview questions tonight? I'm kidding, I'm.
I have my statement, but I'm not going to read it aloud or anything, but.
I'm kidding, does anyone have any, any questions or comments for Michael on this position? I know we included a page from the MASB website in our board packet that talks a little bit about the responsibilities.
I believe the Board of Directors pay is significantly less than our pay, which is significantly insignificant relatively speaking. But, but welcome. I have completed the application, the only thing that's missing is a letter from this board saying that y'all nominated me.
All right, well, I would like to move to add a motion to, to the agenda and I, I would like to, I never make motions, so I would like to move.
I'm not sure you can as a chair.
I don't know. Then, then we'll have, then we'll, I would like to entertain a motion for the Saline Area Schools Board of Education to nominate Vice President McFay, McFay to the MASB Board of Directors for Region Seven. Brad, thank you. Second? Support. Susan, must have support, thank you. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero, congratulations, Michael.
I think we should call it five zero because can I abstain? It seems.
No.
But okay, I'll vote for myself, yay.
Vote for yourself, there you go.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, absolutely, let us know if you need anything else besides the minutes. Moving on to item 10, Administration Updates.
Okay, I just have one and it is a thank you. I'd just like to say to the community, despite our challenges that we've experienced this year, some related to COVID, some related to school safety and some related to other issues, I'm very appreciative of our hardworking staff, our really determined students, our outstanding parent and community base in maintaining our goal of keeping students in school for five days a week of in-person instruction. And that takes a really solid team to pull that off. So as you move into this much deserved two-week winter break, I thank you for your commitment to the Saline Area Schools.
Thank you very much. Julian?
Um, so in the high school, well, to start off, I haven't gotten to address the Oxford stuff and how that was received in the high school. Obviously, we had our own little, I don't really know what to call it, event scare, chaos, I guess you could say. In the high school, which was obviously just in reaction to that, so. In high schools, it's obviously super scary and I, and it was super scary, you know, the days after and it was just stressful. You know, going into school thinking, oh geez, down the road, this just happened and. But it's, it's definitely reassuring to see how much Saline values safety and all the new technology and stuff that we use in our schools, so I'm appreciative for that. So far, the only thing we have done to recognize Oxford is we, we did hold a blue and gold day, the Friday of that week, which was pretty cool. I thought pretty much everyone I saw was rocking some good blue and gold. And secondly, kind of going off of that, I'd like to thank Officer Gasaway, he's our new school officer, our new resource support, I forget, I do not know his official title. School Resource Officer. So far, obviously he was new this year, but he's built a great relationship with pretty much all students I know, everybody knows his name, everybody's seen him around and when I walk by him in the hallway, I always give him a fist bump. Most students I see, you know, say hi or he says hi to students. And that also just makes us all feel pretty safe when we see a figure in the school such as an officer that we all know and respect and that he, and that we know he knows us. So just like to thank him, he's doing a great job and I'm excited to see him for the rest of the year that I'm here. And then regarding winter activities, right now we're doing a Student Council Spirit Week. The themes, the themes are pretty fun, obviously like pajama day, we did a summer versus winter where you could wear, you know, your summer clothes or winter apparel. That was interesting to see. Tomorrow is Winter Wednesday, wearing blue or white, and then we have a flannel day on Thursday and then sweater Friday. All of which is obviously fun, getting ready for winter break. And that's what we're all looking forward to, so the break will be nice. Happy holidays.
Well deserved. Any trustees? Yep.
I have one item, I, I want to acknowledge that we talk about, we're talking about safety a lot tonight and there's been a, a, an awesome partnership, Chief Hart was here, Dr. Latch has been on this, so like having conversations about crosswalks and kids getting to school safely. And it's been something where our community's been coming together. Now, I'm not inactive, I think Michael was there and there have been, or Trustee McFay has been there. And I just want to acknowledge that when we come together, I mean, I've been reading and watching this from afar, but it's neat to see our public service people coming together, our elected officials, our school board, all working together to try to, to figure this out. And, and so like, I'm letting you know we're working on it and it looks, you know, it looks like that. And I just want to acknowledge like, that we are wanting to keep our kids safe on the way to school and our PD has been, you know, our police department has been cognizant and helping us to reinforce those things. And so anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
On, on that note, Nick, this Monday, I and a number of the woodland parents are, yeah, Wildwood parents are going to be talking to the city council during the public comment section, it'd be nice to be at the, the other side of the podium, yeah. And, and, yeah, no pressure at all. And to let timer goes off. But we, we're going to be asking them to stretch their budget a bit. Right now, they, a Colino Tool City Manager found $15,000, but we will need a little more in order to do what we want to do. And so we, we think they might be able to scrape some money out of, maybe out of the budget and move it around a bit. It's all fungible, right Dennis?
Yeah, just a quick update. The DEI Advisory Committee met last week and just wanted to note that there is, I, I've noticed also, I've seen it in practice where there's a really, a greater, greater interest in focusing on a wide variety of holidays. So I've definitely seen that in practice this year and really happy to, to see the representation of all the holidays that are celebrated around this time of year, so just want to honor that and say happy holidays to, to everyone as well.
Happy holidays. Enjoy your break. We still have till Friday, right? Like I have to volunteer pajamas and pancakes and then break, yeah.
I just wanted to give a simple thank you to the board members at this table, Trustee Miller, who isn't with us tonight, and Trustee Boats Wayne, who is no longer with us. It was a lot this year, so I wanted to thank everyone for their hard work and also say thank you for supporting me and trusting me to be your president and facilitate these meetings, so thank you. To the community, please enjoy your break. It's again, well deserved and, and we're, we're sending all of our best wishes for a, a healthy and a safe and a productive 2022. Absolutely.
Absolutely, say. Happy holidays. Sure, come on up.
I just wanted to say happy holidays and, and to, to, to you guys and, and liberal, and special thanks to Jackie for, for helping us and, and happy holidays and Merry Christmas to you guys.
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas and, and to all of the friends at Liberty Club. Thank you. It's a good, good note to end the, the updates on. Moving on to our consent agenda, because I did need to adjust the minutes slightly on the November 23rd, 2021 board meeting, I do need to also adjust the consent agenda on item H. So if you could please listen as I read through the consent, you'll notice a slight change there, which is putting in the Summit Evaluation Score of 86%. So just to kind of listen out for that. Okay, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda, the motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd please, I'd like to recommend, like to entertain a motion, please do authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. Approval of the Board Policy Committee Meeting Minutes of December 9th, 2021. Approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of December 14th, 2021 in the amount of $2,948,230.87. Approval of payment of bond series three accounts payable of December 14th, 2021 in the amount of $511,836.5. Receiving and filing the curriculum and human resources reports. Approval of the, approval to adopt the NEOLA revisions as recommended by the Policy Committee for the following board policies, 7450 Property Inventory and 5722 School Sponsored Publications and Productions. Next, the approval of overnight and or out-of-state field trips as submitted by Superintendent Latch, which includes FT 2021, number 58, Science Olympiad Invitational at Salon High School, Salon, Ohio. And then our adjusted, last item, approval of the superintendent evaluation metrics as reported in the minutes and meeting of November 23rd, 2021, which rated Dr. Latch at a rating of 91% or 3.658 out of four for professional practice portion and a summative evaluation score of 86% or 3.429 out of four, which equates to effective using the Michigan Association of School Boards Superintendent Evaluation Tool. If I can get a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. I was like.
Okay, Michael?
No, I, I, we needed to pull some, I raised my hand, but, um, to pull an item for discussion.
Oh, okay. Which item was being pulled for discussion? Uh, we, I think we took care of that with item A, moving to item J, Board of Education regular meeting minutes of November twenty-third?
No, this is for F, um, the six-one-five-two student fees, fines, and supplies. I just had a comment about that.
Okay, okay. That was removed from the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, we took it off completely?
That's what Michael had requested.
Okay.
We'll bring it back later.
Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, back to motion made by Michael, second. Support. Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six-zero. All right. In closing, um, some items on our next agenda.
Uh, continue to learn update, which will include some COVID updates as we learn more, and also a connection with teaching and learning team literacy update.
All right. Oh, thank you. All right, excellent. And I believe we have that meeting on January eleventh. Now is our second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. We take students first, and seeing no student comments, I have one parent, Kiri Grove, if you'd like to come to the podium and just toggle on the, um, the mic whenever you're ready.
Hello. I see that our high school liaisons are not here anymore, but I have a comment based on personal experience from my students, based on some of the high school things we discussed today. First, I had a Link Crew leader several years ago, and I think she was the first one to offer trunk-or-treat with Julian. It was a little chaotic getting that organized, but, um, I think that's evolved to have fun. And second, she did it two years. So the first year, she was involved with the students, and then as a senior, she moved on to another position, uh, in the leadership, where she was a little bit more structured than hands-on. And so that Link Crew gave her an opportunity to develop her skills, use her personality, and, and her assets. So that was positive. I have an incoming ninth grader this year who did Summit. I know you had a lot of interest in the Summit program. And her experience was, um, a couple positives with Summit coming into the high school. So she felt very well-prepared to transition to the online learning when we went to COVID, based on her experience with Summit. She also knew how to take notes. So something she said that some of the teachers in ninth grade are teaching that skill to some of the other students. Summit has prepared her for knowing how to take notes and prepare. One of the negatives that has come up with Summit is, you know, the goal is to learn the material until you know it. You get to retake tests as many times as you need to, to achieve a passing grade. That has become a negative in high school where you get a one test and done. So just a little feedback on our experience there. And then finally, we talked a little bit about the new, um, student or school resource officer that has come in. And some of you know that we had experience with that a couple of years ago with one of my students, and really had a good experience with that officer being involved in the schools. And, um, I don't know his name anymore. Uh, there was some discussion a couple of years ago about defunding the police, and if that was warranted to remove that position, and you elected to keep it. And so I'm really happy to hear that this new one is making relationships and becoming a trusted adult instead of somebody that's viewed as a threat. So, thank you for the updates that you gave today.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Um, our next meeting, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on January eleventh, 2022. It's hard to believe, at six-thirty PM. Um, I would like to now entertain a motion, please to enter closed session of the Board of Education at eight forty-two PM with intent to reopen, with intent to re-enter open session at nine fifteen PM for the purpose of collective bargaining, eight C of the Open Meetings Act. Under eight C, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into closed session. Can I get a motion?
So moved?
Dennis, thank you.
Support.
Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six-zero. Um, and there is possible action after closed session. We are now in closed session. If we could have everyone take their belongings and exit the boardroom, and we'll shut the doors to reopen at approximately nine fifteen. Thank you.
Okay, and we're back, as Michael said. Okay, we passed a motion made by Brad, seconded by Dennis, to reopen, re-enter open session of the regular Board of Education meeting at 9:16 PM. Thank you, gentlemen. And I'd now like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the proposed agreements for the ESP dated December 8, 2021, resulting in a two-year contract, and for the SEA dated December 9, 2021, resulting in a three-year contract.
I will gladly make this motion.
All right, thank you, Brad. Second?
Support.
I heard Dennis and Candace probably at the same time, so I guess I heard it first, so thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes 6-0. Congratulations. I would now like to please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of December 14, 2021, at 9:19 PM.